Too long, I just have to leave because I have to go to work, so.
Yeah, it's not gonna go too long.
Okay.
Do they get a time limit?
It's, they're thirty minutes.
So it's a half an hour, right?
Yeah, it should be a half hour. But I don't know one that has been a half hour yet.
We're not having a PowerPoint, right?
I don't know.
Anthony, I'll tell you.
No, no PowerPoint.
Anthony. Fire department, any PowerPoint? No PowerPoint?
Oh.
No PowerPoint?
Good to hear.
Neither.
Less than a half an hour?
Probably.
Good.
Good. Good. Let's, we're gonna have a time.
Is she ready?
Yeah, we're ready.
Call the budget workshop to order for Tuesday, March thirteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven oh five PM. Start first with, uh, pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, equal to civil, liberty, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Judy.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Angeloni.
Here.
Councilor Candora. Councilor Diner.
Here.
Councilor Owen. Councilor Miller.
Here.
Councilor Rose.
Here.
Councilor Biggell.
Here.
Councilor Zambina.
Next is budget overview for two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, operational capital. First is the library.
Yes, Lauren, welcome.
Thank you.
I want to just, I want to make a comment first before we get started that we put out the, sort of, a summary cover sheet, first sheet, uh, for the town council to get an idea of where we currently are, starting at. And that's, that one-page summary sheet, thought it might be helpful from the beginning to get started, uh, before we get into the whole, um, department by department.
Thank you.
These are just summaries of each. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, the library this year is in a unique position with the retirement of two long-term, um, full-time employees. Bob Hall retired in two thousand seventeen, and Helen Glaston just retired in February of two thousand eighteen. So, their salaries, there's a significant reduction in their salaries, um, between, um, Bob Hall's and mine, and whoever will replace Helen when she, um, when we hire a person in her department. Um, so between the salaries of full-time employees and the pension and social security, uh, funds, there was enough wiggle room for us to add needed services and resources without, um, going over, uh, last year's budget. So, I feel confident that this budget addresses more needs than in years past. It also addresses, I believe, facilities, uh, needs, since we are approaching, uh, the ten-year mark when it comes to our buildings, um, and things are starting to show some wear and tear. If you want me to go through the first account and just do a little bore explanation in detail as to what the numbers are, or if you have any initial questions, after looking it over.
Could, yeah, I think you've helped with the facilities, but could you kind of go into detail, because there is quite an increase in facilities?
So, when I started, I noticed immediately things like light bulbs. There are dozens and dozens of light bulbs out, and I had no idea that one light bulb could cost thirty dollars. And costs like that, um, added up very quickly. Between that and the elevator, just maintaining, um, absolute necessities. Lighting, um, elevator in terms of handicapped accessibility. But Ken Ash, who works for the Public Works and does the facility's maintenance, also pointed out simple things like, um, one of our heating units in Smith doesn't work properly, and that could be a three thousand dollar charge. Um, things that just haven't been addressed, just because it's not absolute necessity right now. Um, other things like, uh, antifreeze, I think, in the geothermal unit, something like that. I know, that's a cost that would be added up, um, cooling. So, little things like that are starting to pile on. In the last month, I think we've spent close to twenty-five hundred dollars just on elevator repairs. That's a lot of money. That's not, and that's not including the maintenance costs, the monthly maintenance costs. Um, I think that is an attempt to be proactive in terms of, um, not getting caught. Our automatic door opener, when the automatic door button on the outside at Atwater is not a hundred percent reliable. Um, I think, so we don't have to pull from something else when a repair like that is needed, we're trying to put the money up front and not be caught off guard.
I appreciate that. Do you have a maintenance contract on the, on the elevators, or is it, as, if something happens?
There is a service contract, um, and then that does not cover what most of these other random breakdowns are. We had an issue with our smoke detectors going off, which, and every time a smoke detector goes off, the elevator company has to come back in and put it, take it out of fire service and put it back into regular service.
This is in Atwater?
This is in Smith.
This is in Smith.
Smith has the full elevator, Atwater has the lift, which, that lift is prone to getting stuck and breaking down. And from what I understand, the part to fix it, um, is a significant expense. And it's just a little pin, but because it hasn't been, um, has to be manufactured, I guess, um... Whenever we fix it, it's just a temporary fix, it seems. It's gonna break again until this unit, which can cost you thousands of dollars, is replaced.
But in the meantime, you're spending money to keep fixing it
Right.
in between without really getting it fixed. It's a temporary fix.
It's not a hundred percent reliable. There are staff who just won't use it because it gets stuck.
So, do you have an estimate of what it would cost to fix it properly, or could you get an estimate for us?
When I spoke to somebody who's not our current, um, elevator company, um, he said forty thousand dollars to replace the entire lift. He said this particular lift is known for that, I don't even want to call it a defect, I just know that it's a known problem.
So that's to replace it?
The whole lift. To replace the part, I believe three thousand dollars was a number thrown at me. Um, but the elevator company that we use is aware of the problem. I just think that they have to somehow manufacture a part to replace this, it's where the door latch is. It's a plastic part with metal pins, I guess.
So they don't have the part, they have to manufacture it?
I believe that is what I understand, if I can interpret elevator talk, speak. So from day one, it was always an issue. It continues to be an issue. Every time somebody goes in there, I get slightly nervous and hold my breath that we won't be using a screwdriver to pop it open to get them out.
And have you done that?
I have not. I've had to pop it open, but somebody was not in it, but there have been people who have gotten stuck in it multiple times.
And that's the, uh, the way you solve it, by putting a screwdriver in?
It pops open the door.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's an enclosed lift.
Okay.
So, I don't like to spend money on elevator repairs, and when I see thousands of dollars going towards the same problem, when I know it could be better spent on a different need, it's just a concern to me.
Well, I, I think it's a real safety factor. Yeah, I, I'm concerned about the safety factor and that we continually spend money to have it serviced temporarily and not get it fixed permanently. And I, I'm not for putting in a whole new lift
Right.
on there, but if there's a part that is going to be several thousand dollars to fix it and have it operational, I would tend to go that route, so...
I will see if I can get a better, um, cost.
And if, if this part is put in and that's what they deem needs to be done, what kind of warranty is on that?
And the brand that we have for our lift is a good brand, from what I understand. That's what this other gentleman I spoke to, who does not have our current contract, said. He said it's one of the better brands.
Did he give you an estimate on fixing it?
He's the one that said, to, to, he gave me an estimate on the whole lift replacement, which was forty thousand. He did not give me an estimate on the part. That was our current contract, um, with Eagle Elevator.
So, so what's getting stuck? Just the latch on the door for you to get out?
Just two...
And there's a hole in the door and you guys can put a screwdriver in it and trip it, so the door opens?
Yeah, it's two very small pins.
So that's a limited-use elevator at, atwater? That's not for the general public?
The general public can use it.
But they probably, it's probably put in as a limited use, or it wouldn't just be a lift. They call them a limoir. What's the state say? Does the state come in and inspect this, uh, once a year?
I believe so. Um, I have not seen anyone come in yet. Um, I know we just got an inspection for the elevator at Smith. But I'm not sure if the same rules apply for a lift.
See, so that's the thing, too, and it's like, if it was a lift and it was for, so the, so that's what we gotta find out, if it is a limited use, because if it's not a full-blown elevator with the doors that close and everything, the general public's not supposed to use it unless it's like an emergency.
It is completely enclosed. It's clear strung.
It's completely enclosed, but like, the walls don't move with the elevator?
It's almost like, um...
It's like a, so it's a lift within, so like, the wall doesn't go up and down with you?
You're in a little cart.
Just, you're in a cart.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not...
Well, they had to put that in, I thought, to make it handicap accessible.
Right, right. That's the only people that are supposed to use that.
Right.
So it's a...
That's my point.
Okay.
So, the general population is not supposed to use that.
Right.
So...
A limited, uh, and, but you know what? We'll, I'll clear that up.
Like, if we have a mom with a kid here...
I've put an elevator in every house I've built, some of them five stops for the last twenty years. So, this sounds like it's a limited-use lift.
Limits, which...
And the cheap people I build for will put those in, but you can't, that cannot be, that lift cannot be for the general population.
Do you have to be hand, can a mother with a stroller use it to get down to the children?
I think someone like that could be, but see, that type of pin, see, that's like a residential thing, and it's a cheaper one. And, and believe me, I'm up on this because I was trying to put a limited use in the winery, and I got denied. So how it can be in the library, it's just for somebody in a wheelchair, up to somebody, the staff there to let the mom with a child use it, but like, up and down for like, kids playing in it and stuff like that, or people just going up and down it when they're supposed to use the store? But see, those latches are more an alignment thing with the, um, and believe me, we, we have...
Becoming loose and then getting stuck.
The hole in the door and stuff, that, it's, it's normally an alignment issue, um, because that's a residential-type latch. The door has to be shut, and that's the other thing, too. People get stuck in elevators that tight because somehow the door was left open, one floor or the other, and, uh, things like that, you know?
The gentleman that came from Eagle Elevator did say you have to be very specific in how you open the door. You have to let it close on its own, um, and...
Right.
That's why we require staff to use it.
We should, we should look into that, and it should be, so you had an inspection from the state at Smith?
For the elevator, yes, but I don't believe I've ever seen someone from...
And Smith has no issues?
With the elevator?
Well, you know what? I think you're right. I think the limited-use things aren't regulated by the state. I think you're right, and it's like up to your own, because when we put, when I put those in, there's no state inspector.
But if it's a public place, Allen, uh...
Because it's a spec, it's called a limoir, and, uh, whatever that's, you know, some kind of limited use, and it's a gray area that says, okay, churches, a, a poor library can't afford the hundred thousand dollar elevator. So you put those in.
Yeah, but at the same time, we have a maintenance agreement, correct?
Yes, for a month.
So when they come do their inspection, they should be providing whatever the problem is and saying, hey, if you'd like to fix this problem, here's, here's what we need to do, so we correct it. That's what, I mean, that's pretty basic.
I agree.
Yeah, and it doesn't sound like a big problem.
But here's the thing, when those things are working properly and when the latches are working properly, they should go a year trouble free, okay? And it's not like, those latches, so, so the elevator only stops mov, doesn't stop moving and you're stuck between floors. The door doesn't open and people can't get out.
The lift.
Right, on the lift.
Right, it won't open. You're enclosed.
But it's not stuck between the floors.
So, that's that latch that is real funky, there's a hole in the door, and believe me, we leave a screwdriver where you can get it when we, when we'll put one in a house that is like that, because they, those latches are finicky.
But, but if the maintenance company's not providing that, they're not doing their job.
I think the contract just covers monthly maintenance with just...
No, but what I mean is, if there's a problem, they should say, hey, here's the problem.
Right.
Here's this problem. You know, we did our maintenance, but here's, here's a problem you have. They, they, they're not gonna fix it, of course, per the maintenance agreement, but they should be able to point that out to you and give you the solution.
They know of the problem.
Yeah, but you need to know it. You know, they should be handing you a, a, you know, some, exactly, a report every, every month or quarterly, I'm not sure what the frequency is, but...
Yeah, and all the maintenance that was done.
That way you can get it fixed.
But you're saying they have to manufacture whatever? They don't even have the part?
From what I understand, because it's a problem that's been going on for well over a year, I believe, it's a plastic part that has pins, and I think it's the plastic part, the door latch, that needs to get specially manufactured.
It seems bizarre, huh?
It looks like a two-dollar sheet plastic part.
So here's what we're gonna do. I'm gonna go look at the library. I'm gonna go look at the lift and the latches.
There is a lift.
And I'm gonna bring, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring, because here's the thing, I'm gonna tell you right now, whether you have a service contract with heating and cooling, or you have it with an elevator company, you get the last guy hired, he comes out, they, they don't know what they're doing, they have no skills, and they can't figure out why this latch is catching, or, or the, um, the generating wheel at the intermediate school isn't turning, okay? That's the nature of the average employee that works for somebody, and all they care about is, hey, they signed up with our contract and, oh, well. So, you know, when, where in my case, I have an irate client if they were stuck in their elevator. So, you've gotta, you've gotta, and that's, and that's really not, like, these limited-use things aren't really for an elevator guy to... That latch is, a lot of times, it's because the door sagged, and the way it's supposed to close, and it's magnetic, it's supposed to close, doesn't align anymore, and the, and so the problem might be that the building settled, the door sagged a little bit, and it's misaligned. Your average Joe elevator inspector has no clue that that's what the problem is. So, I'll take it upon myself to go see her and her limited-use thing, and I will actually bring
The part.
an elevator expert with me as a favor to me. And, uh, I buy elevators from him all the time, and, um, we'll take a look at it and see what the problem is.
Finding a company that does both elevator repair and lift repair is also a little tricky, um, because Smith has the elevator.
These lifts are not, they're not really meant for, they're for churches and little poor libraries and... And they're actually, if you think about it, and the ones I've put in, it's like, you're in this cart, and I've often wondered, like, you know, could you put your arm against the wall and get it burned as the thing's going up and down, you know, it's like...
It shakes, it's not, does not feel sturdy to me at all.
No, I know exactly, I've never seen it, but I know what you're talking about, so...
It's scary. Especially if you have a handicapped person.
You threw a, you threw a number of three thousand dollars for possi, possibly for repair, um, and you've got a, uh, a good amount in facility maintenance for elevators. Could you, could you absorb that three thousand dollars if you had to, uh, with this budget?
Sure, probably, um, assuming it's a nice, permanent fix, that would be good.
So your, your number's okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
That's what we want.
I would hate to spend that and then find out two months later that here we go again.
Yeah, of course.
I prefer some guarantee that this is the fix we've been looking for. But it's concerning because the company that we go with, they know of the problem, and I'm not sure if they just don't know how to go about fixing it in terms of manufacturing the pro, the part. They don't want to fix it, or we're just a poor library, and they just figure we're going along as is, perfectly fine. I'm not a hundred percent sure what angle that's coming from.
Um, I have one question. I don't understand. Maybe you can enlighten me. On, let's see, one oh two, part-time, it says, um, it allows full-time employee Donna Wiedemann to work her normally scheduled thirty-five hours as opposed to thirty-nine hours in banking the comp time. What does that, like, mean?
Donna is a full-time employee who is a thirty-five-hour-per-week employee. I think what happened was due to scheduling and coverage, Bob asked her to work thirty-nine hours per week, and I'm not sure how long it's been going on. I would say probably a year plus. So every time, every week she's put on the schedule for thirty-nine hours, and then she banks those four hours of comp time. And rather than requiring her to do thirty-nine hours on the schedule, I'd rather use that time for part-time and let her stick to her thirty-five-hour position. She has hundreds and hundreds of hours of comp time because she's been doing this for weeks, years. So by keeping her in line with thirty-five hours and then using part-time hours to, um, cover the desk, I'm not sure why this was a Bob carryover. I don't know why Bob set it up that way. Um, Donna does not like it.
So what do you do with this comp time?
Yeah, that, well, that's where I was confused, because her hours were thirty-five.
Like, we're gonna buy it out someday?
Like, yeah.
No, they do use it. I think this is a library thing, from what I understand. We were discussing the other day. Um, they can use it, um, for a personal time, like today. They could use it for a snow day if they didn't come in and the library was open.
But, so Anthony, do you know exactly how many comp hours she has, roughly?
Maintained by the library, Mark.
I have it in a file. I don't have it with me.
I guess my question is, though, if her hours are thirty-five, like, how is she comping?
She's gonna work thirty-five. So we agree with you on that.
Right, but why do you continue to comp the other four hours? I guess that's where I'm confused.
I don't understand.
We're not gonna date myself here. Um, we had a town manager, and Anthony, Frank Connolly, and so when somebody like yourself or any head of a department was in here, we had a late meeting, he used to give them just comp time and say, oh, well, you were at a meeting, and, and, uh, so you can take that in the morning and stuff. I'm gonna tell you straight up, the town council said, knock it off. They're salaried positions, they're, they're, it's part of their job, and, you know, so, the town council in the nineteen eighties or early nineties said knock it off with comp time. So, I'm not sure why Bob Hall was doing this, or how he thought he should, and how he, you know... It doesn't make sense to me, but it's, it's not a good practice. I agree with you totally on that, and, uh, we should clean that up.
Apparently Lauren is.
Yes.
The practice of comp time would still exist, though. She just wouldn't be getting so much per week.
Does she have the option of taking either the comp time or the pay for the extra four hours?
No.
No, okay, it's just comp time only.
The premise on the comp time, you're right, is that they have the option of being paid for additional hours, but they can choose to have comp time, that they can use at their discretion down the road. It's, it's, as Lauren mentioned, the Bob carryover, he had, no one in the apartment in town has it at the library, and just his relation he has with all his librarians that were at, and that's what he maintained, that if there were a couple of extra hours, they can either get paid for it, or most of them choose to get comp time that they can use, they gotta take an appointment or whatever they have to leave for, leave early, they get paid at full-time, they take two hours of comp time, let's say whatever.
Yeah, but the book is in the library.
Yeah.
Where all the books are.
No, but I, I'm still confused, though, if, that her hours are thirty-five hours.
But she's on the schedule for thirty-nine.
Right, but now we're, if I'm reading this right, you're doing away with the thirty-nine, and she's going to thirty-five, right?
Yes, she will continue to work thirty-five hours.
So, how...
She wants to give the four hours to a part-time employee.
Yeah, but, so...
I believe Bob did it for schedule.
But how is she banking?
She's banking four hours every week.
Prior to this, prior.
Prior, okay, so it's not continued, not, that's where I was confused, because the way this read, I thought, all right, now I understand it, okay.
It was...
I think it's a dangerous practice, and you should just end all comp time that way. I, I don't know, I don't, I, I just don't, I don't agree with it. Say this person leaves and they have, I don't know, four hours a week, they got two hundred hours of comp time, then we're supposed to pay them for it?
Right, and, I agree.
I'd say a lot of the staff use it if they're going to, um, do something extra. Stay later for a program, um, buy supplies for a program. It's not a part of their normal scheduled hours and coverage for the library, but it's still work-related, and that's where a lot of the comp time would come in. It's hard some...
Do you know what we'd owe Franny Marola if he had the same deal? We'd have to go up two mills on our budget. It's not a good practice, and it's not across the board in town, and it shouldn't be.
So are you saying it's ended? She's not, she's not gonna get those four?
She's not saying it's ended. Read what she's saying.
The comp time...
She doesn't want it to end.
It's in the library contract.
Come on!
Swear to God.
Okay, good to know.
Why are they up for negotiations?
Right, right now.
Perfect, take it out.
Marie can really know it.
Marie has to really know.
And then, I'm sorry.
Take it out.
I have one more question, I'm sorry.
Don't apologize.
Does anybody here think that it's a good idea to do it this way?
No.
I will say...
So just take it out.
Working in a public building, it is hard when you're supposed to be on a public desk and you're scheduled for that, and you try to do, um, other things that aren't on the desk. Planning a program, ordering materials, um, you don't always have the luxury of being able to escape, um, that publicness, and sometimes, um, there is a carryover. I wouldn't say the comp time is an issue. I just would rather not have her be scheduled for that when I can replace her hours with a part-time person. It's just as easy. I don't know why it hasn't been done in the past.
So it's not the practice, it's, it's the scheduling of it.
Right, it's scheduling, it's...
And she's the only one who's scheduled for it. Okay, so that's a different, uh, that's a different issue. So we can look at the, uh, the practice when we look at the contract.
Right.
Okay, but this is just the one person.
I wouldn't say it's abused in any way.
No, but you, but you said it's been built up to some
Right.
significant number.
On line three oh seven, travel transportation.
Yes.
Now, is that like going from library to library, bringing supplies and whatnot, and...
We get delivery about four times a week, and it only goes to the Smith Library, so it's up to me to go there and bring. And I bring, I believe it was about thirteen hundred items, um, in a month.
Now, how is that delivered by, like...
It's a contracted service that our consortium pays, um, and in there, you notice there's a new fee. The state used to put it up with the budget fallout. The state tried to absorb it, and it just turned into a disaster. The state tried to absorb it and it just turned into a disaster and it was, it suffered.
But with that company, they won't deliver the items to Smith and to Atwater, they'll only deliver?
Just Smith.
They'll only deliver to one library. And then it's up to you to.
Right.
Why is that?
I don't know if it would have been an extra cost or if that's just the way it was set up. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that.
We should look into that because that would save you a lot of time and probably heartache.
I do feel my biceps are a little stronger. But even between hold being fulfilled and new books being processed at Atwater and then going to Smith, there is a significant volume being transported between the two libraries.
I mean, I could see a few things here and there, but I mean, the bulk of it, I would think you'd be able to possibly control and have it delivered to each library and maybe that might help.
I will see if I can figure out why it's only one delivery, if that's an option or that.
That's been in place, though, for a couple of years, though.
The Riverbend service is new, it was last September. The state has been doing it for years and I believe that was the same situation where they only delivered to Smith.
Yeah, because I remember, you know, having the conversation with Bob and I thought it was that because they're going statewide, that they couldn't do multiple stops. It was just one destination per town.
Right, and I think when especially the state took it over, they were already short-staffed.
Right.
They weren't gonna add another one for one.
But it's not only the state deliveries that need to be transported. You have other things that go back and forth.
Right, so all new books get processed or new items get processed at Atwater. Those that belong to Smith get brought back and forth. We do rotate items between two libraries. So we're not duplicating titles. So those things get brought back and forth.
Sounds like having two libraries is a real pain. We'd be better off with one.
I'm not gonna go down that road. You know, we're not gonna change that. It's.
The state may help us too.
Logistically, it's different.
With like cleaning supplies, the cleaning of the library, is that piggybacked in with contracts that the town has with the cleaning services or?
No.
No.
Public Works is purchasing them now, just for a better price in terms of bulk. But prior to that, we were not included in their.
So you have your own company that comes in to clean the library?
We have a custodian.
Oh, okay.
Who is on our part-time staff. And they've gone the route of hiring a company and they did not like that route. I believe there was theft issues, damage to the library.
And then just lastly, and I won't bother you anymore.
No, you're.
On the computer.
I think that's why you're supposed to be up there, right?
On the three, like, includes a request for three new staff computers?
Yes.
Is that something we can piggyback with, I don't know, the town lease program or the BOE? To help you get a better price for the computers?
I have not looked into that. We belong to a consortium where we can get our computers through them. I don't know if the pricing is better, but it would include installation, setup. They basically pick out two models that they're comfortable with and they feel are best for libraries. And then desktop or laptop and then they would come and install it. And it would be the same computer for, you know, thirty libraries in this consortium. So I'm sure they do buy in some type of volume.
And you're asking for one, one computer?
One laptop, two desktop. When I started in my position, there was no computer, so I am not using a town-owned computer currently, which I would prefer not to continue that process.
In terms of Sunday, have you been keeping track of how well that's going? Is it, has it worked well in terms of the extra costs of having the library open for those months on Sunday?
I don't have numbers in terms of attendance in front of me, but just from what I hear and what I've witnessed myself, there's a steady flow of people that come in for different reasons. I'm, I was surprised, to be honest with you, but it is.
It's worked well.
I think so. I think it obviously is fitting a need that people have.
Anybody else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you have to say that. You sure?
I'll call you when I'm coming to inspect your elevator.
Okay, are we sure I'm there?
I'll call Michael. He'll set it up with you.
Thank you.
Forgot to tell her she's the head of a department in North Branford, though. She'll live with what we gave her.
I didn't hear what you said.
Police.
Forty-two ten.
Rip.
Let's start, Jimmy. And then start. Any questions?
We have something that we'd like, we'd like to go over with the council, Tony Catticando and Victor Panier. You put some time into this, it's like a five-minute presentation. The only thing is a security matter. We're wondering if we can get five minutes of executive session so that we can talk to the council.
I don't know if we could go into executive session. Should've asked for that before. You can't move it. They did mention at their, their, their meeting. I, I suggested that they request, but, and I think the council, if desires, could look at it at a, at a, at a different time, not necessarily tonight, could go through the numbers tonight. I mean, I, I think they've got a, they want the opportunity to be in executive session with you to make their case with respect to personnel. As you see, you can see in the numbers and the notations that they had requested for officers that I have taken out or eliminated in that process. And I think they'd like that opportunity to present their rationale and their explanation. But I understand it from a personnel and security perspective that they want the executive session. But again, I'm not sure that you can or want to do it until, you know, Vince or somebody else, the town council has taken a look at it, that we're, we're clear about going into executive session and, and you probably want to set a.
Are we able to go into executive session today?
At this point, I don't believe that's legal.
It's, it's, it's unusual. I don't know that you can't because it was, it's noticed as a budgetary item. You are talking about their budget and then the impact of their budget around and in, in part of the budget is personnel funding and funding for personnel. I, I think you could, I believe, but I would rather err on the side of caution to say that I run this by the town attorney.
Can we do it at the next regular meeting and notice it properly?
Of course you can, yeah.
Just on Tuesday's meeting.
You could, you could do it Tuesday. You could do it anytime after, yeah, anytime you want.
Why couldn't we do it before Tuesday, like, half an hour before or something, Tuesday's meeting?
That would work for me.
That's all right.
And then it can be properly noticed and then there isn't a question.
You guys wanna do that?
I mean, personally, I'd rather do it tonight than have, coming early is tough for me.
I don't know if we can do it legally. That's the only.
Oh, is this on tape?
Yes.
I mean, it's part of the project process.
Why don't we shut the tape off?
Can I shut the tape off?
No.
You can.
Let's just do it at the council, just do an executive session at the next council on the twenty.
Well, you're, you're the guy who's calling it, so if you feel it's that sensitive that can't be seen and we have to do an executive session, that's fine. If not, just shoot it.
I think we should just speak on it.
Yeah.
Just go, go ahead, though.
I'll be very cautious, I guess.
It's not that secret, though.
No.
Well, thank you for allowing us to do this presentation. My name is Tony D'Aglio. Tell people I'm not. I wanna start by saying that the chief has done a good job with smoking mirrors and doing two-mane shifts. We have to cover from the Guilford line to the Durham line to the North Haven line to the East Haven line to the Branford line with two-mane tunnels. So what you have in front of you, first of all, the package that has more than one sheet. If you look at the first page, it has forty-one days on it. Each page may have different days. It's three shifts in the day and there's a percentage of how many of those shifts are two-mane. The next column has the midnight shift, seventeen days. And you see the figures.
You mean you have, excuse me, you have one officer each end in town or one in the whole town?
Yes.
Two officers.
That's correct. During goes for that percentage of shifts. This was information gathered for two thousand seventeen by the police department and given to our commission for evaluation based on the working shifts. So the second shift is the day shift. The third shift is the evening shift. That evening shift is mandatory three-mane. That's why there's zero all the way through all these sheets. So the actual total percentage is kind of off because it's a zero percent on evenings. And the fourth one that says records, that's the day shift only where for years the chief assumed that there's a person in records. There's two detectives, we kind of whatever. So he doesn't count that as a two-mane shift. But if you see, I, we'll spare us next, weekends, midnights, there's zero, there's two people in your, in this contract. Guilford line and Durham, that's about a point you can arrive, fifteen minutes lights and signee. And you can look at all these numbers and percentages and check it out when we get a chance. The other sheet, which is a single sheet, has is, as if we were able to hire two hires. Two new hires would give us a supervisor on all shifts, three in one, supervisor, three patrolmen. And it would only leave two midnight shifts not covered by a supervisor when the midnight sergeant is out. So that's what that other sheet is. And the third hire would be a split shift, possibly cover the midnight. I'd want someone to sergeant to get two days where they possibly would work administration because we already have the days covered by it. When that sergeant is off his two days, somebody has a split shift down there at the evenings and days. And then our fourth hire that we were requesting was somebody that could possibly work, you know, if we're at full capacity, which right now we're down three police officers, correct? People retiring, somebody out injured, and somebody out there. Something we can't discuss. So we're actually down three officers. If we are ever at full capacity, we could put somebody in the bureau. He could go in a task force, whether it be the narcotics task force. He could get full training through that. He could actually, someone's going to pay for that officer through the state, through the feds, right?
State.
Pay for it. But that's basically what I have.
You're saying it's mandatory for three on the evening shift?
Yes.
That's the only one that's a mandate?
And that's why it's a zero percentage throughout the whole thing because they have to have three that's put in the contract.
No, it's not in the contract. It's just my, my policy.
Now, a couple of times you have only two during the day?
Yes. Two on the road, um, you know, two uniforms on the road, one uniform and records.
And he could be in court in New Haven.
So if there's an issue and you have two, then you have to bring on like a sergeant or something to?
If one is out.
So what happens if? Like, let's say, I don't know, domestic, so you have two.
It's a two-mane call, so our whole police force is tied up, possibly. And actually, last week, I heard two times officers in distress calling for help on the air. From one from the ice rink in Northford. Cholman, the officers were off one thirty-nine, I believe. And he called several times over the air and eventually the dispatcher called North Haven. And it was, you know, resolved it. And then another time, an officer called in distress and luckily an off-duty officer went there because that's the kind of officers we have in this town. We're fortunate to have perhaps like half a dozen that live here. The off-duty officer went there because the person on the street, the police officer that was calling for help. So that's why we request the court for people and we wanted the opportunity to explain it.
So in looking at the long schedule here, when I'm looking at evenings down below and I guess it's officers eighteen, eighteen to twenty- and I guess it's officers eighteen, eighteen to twenty-one, if there's days that there's only two down there, then is the sergeant up at top EE slash DD, is that the third person on that shift? Then to make the three for evenings?
Who fills out and make four?
I filled it out.
Well, no, there'd be two, there's two here and then there's one up at the top.
And a six to two.
Which one are you talking about?
I don't know.
It's, well, it's number six, sergeant, it says a sergeant EE slash DD. So I'm looking at Tuesday the third. So there's an E there, so I'm taking he's on evenings.
Right.
And then officer eighteen and nineteen is evening. So that's your mandatory minimum of three officers for evenings? Is that how you get that?
Yeah, the sergeant would count as the third officer.
Okay. So if there's not three down below, then, so those days, there's four because then you have a sergeant up above, so that's how you get your three or four, okay?
We did make a special shift for the person involved in the FM LA because he doesn't really come to work all the time. So we actually made a special shift for him.
So that officer eight, sergeant six dash two, is that six AM to two PM or six PM to two?
Six PM.
Oh, so that's a split between two shifts then?
Right, it overlaps on the midnight shift.
And the evening, or midnights and...
And evenings.
If he doesn't come to work, if he comes, he's there, if he doesn't, we move without it. Otherwise, if he was on a shift in the spot and we called him, we'd have to hold somebody open and it creates a problem. If it happens.
Have you, have you done any research on comparable towns of our size in terms of what, what they usually got?
I don't think so.
Has anybody looked at that?
Do you have to?
Um, Madison's running about thirty people, twenty-seven on the average, and they have about eighteen thousand residents, we have fifteen thousand. So they're running approximately nine more men than we are. But if you look at his paperwork, when I was, we were helping each other do the study, we're averaging between twenty-three and twenty-five percent two man shifts. So if there's a call all the way out in North River Fire Department and two P, two of the officers would have to go, it's almost a fifteen to eighteen minute drive to get to the other side of the Guilford line and nobody would be on call, so the shifts are running very thin. And the, the stats are on that sheet that he gave you. If you take it and you take the long sum of everything, it's averaging between twenty-three and twenty-five percent two men shifts. So it's becoming somewhat of a public safety issue that the manpower became a, you know, a topic, conversation in the department. I know it's a financial burden to the town, but where's the line for a financial burden versus public safety?
In our innocent, the town is not so innocent anymore.
Um, with the, I want to be careful of the, I don't want to say even the word, but would there be a way to buy out or work a deal to, with that, the one?
That's something to be talked about at a later date, the commissioners. But we're also down another officer that just retired. And the, the chief and the lieutenant are right now in the process of applications for interviews and, you know, it's going to be a lengthy time. We have another officer that is going to be out for a little time until he comes back. So, you know, the overtime budget's getting hit pretty good and they're running thin.
That was my thought process was, because if you could do that, we already pay him.
That's something, yeah, that's something that could, that's something we can discuss at that point. It'd be that person, once we get together as commissioners in executive session. But right now, we're down a guy, one possibly who we can negotiate with and we're still short at least four guys at six men. That's a tough situation.
So even, let's just say replacing that one, the one that retired, you're still down?
We're still down. Just replacing those two officers doesn't help us at all. But right now, it's going to take the lieutenant, if I'm not mistaken, at least six months to replace that one officer.
It'll take longer than that. Six months for the academy, four hundred hours for FTO, plus the process that we're going through right now for, um, the application's closed on, on Friday, the sixteenth. They have to do an agility test that eliminates a certain portion. They have to set up for a written exam. That removes a certain amount of people. Then we start the interviews and after that, you have to go for a polygraph and a psychological. It's talking almost a year.
So you got a year. So when this budget was put together, the department was intact and nobody retired and nobody was injured. So now we're short two guys on top of what we presented. It could, it was not adjusted to those numbers. So the four men that we're asking for is almost, we, we can't even do it out. It's becoming a public safety issue at that point. You can't run twenty-five percent of the shifts, two man shifts. And, you know, we're, you know, luck's going to run out sooner or later. With, you know, money being tough out there, people are getting divorced, crime, everything's going up in the towns and you can't have two people on a shift.
Are we running our own hiring process or are we using South Central?
We do our own hiring process. South, South Central's fourteen thousand dollars a year. We dropped out of that maybe seven or eight years ago.
You're already, still, still a member of it? You don't have access to that?
No.
Councilman Miller, you have any suggestions about that?
Well, not off the top of my head, but that was the first question.
George, I think what they do too is they implemented a fee that I think right, leave applicants...
Yeah, we're, we're better off without South Central because we control the lists.
Well, I understand we don't hire enough with enough frequency, but I was just asking the question because I saw, I see that you're using South Central in, you know, professional development. So I was just asking the question.
So the, the officer grade A hold spot, is that someone that left and we're hiring? Or in your, in the budget here, what is that?
Right, I didn't hear that question, but George, if you look at South Central, if you go all the way over, it's a zero.
Yeah.
You follow that?
Well, that's the command training, I see that.
I don't agree either, the night person.
We're South Central. That's different than that.
A new person for what?
Rose, what was your question?
My question, on, on your list of officers, there's one that says officer grade A hold spot. So is that someone that left that we're filling the spot or...
Yes, that's someone that's, that's gone.
Not that recently left, that left. Does his...
The one that just left.
Well, his name's still in it.
That spot there will be with the grade B officer next year when he comes up to the grade A pay. He'll just fall into that.
That's Matt Hannon.
So instead of ruining Anthony's nice precision, uh, set up there. That, that's the only reason it's there so we don't mess up his one that lives down the line with him. So at the two year mark, they hit that grade A, so he'll, he'll, well, his name will just be adjusted.
Sorry about that.
So grade C and grade B are at different rates of pay and then when he gets there, it'd be a different one.
Okay, so all of the new offers, officers that you originally put into the budget, they would all start off at grade A?
No. Um, we, we put them at grade A because we're looking for laterals. If we get, if we get a lateral and if they have three years or more experience, then we'll start them as grade A. But they could also be grade C if we start fresh.
Okay.
It saves the town a lot more money if we get a grade A because we prevent them from going to school for six months and also the FTO for another four hundred hours.
Is there much of a pool out there? Is there much of a pool out there for laterals? You've had some significant success with it.
Yeah. There's fifty-four applications now, as of today, we got eighteen back. And out of eighteen, there's four that are laterals. One is a young man, only has three years of service for another department. So we're looking at him pretty strongly. The, the last fellow we hired, Steve Adenti, he was a lateral. He came, he came right on and started servicing the town quick.
Sure.
So, so the thing, so the thing is, if I budget it for grade C and then we hire a lateral that's grade A, then I'm already in a, I'm already in a deficit. So we put grade As, we went for the highest because it's a good possibility that we could fill it with As instead of brand new, which is a C.
Okay. And the cost difference between an A and a C is approximately...
Eighteen thousand.
Just in salary or salary and then all the other?
Great, I, well, I should take that back. Grade C is at about fifty-five thousand per salary.
Okay.
Seven and three.
Okay.
As far as insurance is, we don't know because if the person is married and family...
Not that, but I mean, it's the money and then it's the, the social, the social, you know, the social security and that type, that type pension and stuff. I, insurance, I don't, it doesn't really matter, but it's about eighteen plus your insurance class. Okay. And why is there a holiday pay adjustment for sergeants and patrolmen in the budget? If they don't get those or that those dollar amounts?
It goes by, it goes by their, their rate of pay. Is that why you're asking why there's two?
No, down at the bottom, there's a, it says under full-time holiday pay adjustment.
Yep.
So it's a naked, you're subtracting it. So why would, don't they get holiday pay?
That's Anthony's explanation.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to say what the mayor said, I was...
Uh, we've been there, if they're a forty hour employee, they're holidaying that week. They get thirty-two hours of straight time, they get eight hours of holiday pay and eight hours if they work it, time and a half. So it's just accounting the way it flows. If they don't work it, they get the forty hours straight and then eight hours and half of that for holiday. But if they, the minus is coming out of full time because they get thirty-two hours that week, full time, eight hours holiday, eight hours time and a half if they work it.
Okay.
So you have to take one oh five.
Yeah.
Then one oh three.
They marry the other one.
Could you explain, you, you requested a hundred and seven thousand and change and the town manager made it ninety-one thousand. What was your need in terms of the contractual holiday pay?
He removed the officers.
Oh, he removed the officers, oh, okay, I see.
So everything drops down.
Oh, okay, I see. I was forgetting that part.
On the technical equipment, is, are the lines for handguns and radios to service those positions that you hope to get?
Yeah, we, we put in for the weapons, the tasers, the radios, the uniform allowance, the town manager. With the four men, the town manager, not only did it cut the four men, everything that derives to put that person on, on patrol, that's taken out also.
Okay, well then, the equipment's still in here.
What, what number are you on?
Which line I know.
Four oh five.
Those aren't the new guys.
Okay, that, that's replacement, uh, replacement equipment?
Yeah, the rifles and...
Not the rifles, I'm asking about the tasers, handguns and radios. And if, if that's...
It just happens to be four.
Which is, which is the positions that they were asking for, so I'm just asking if those were supposed to be accompanying those positions which were apparently cut or...
Are they just replacements?
Or are they just replacements?
No, the four oh five account, that would indicate the four new men.
Okay, and the SWAT rifles are not, I understand that's different.
That's different.
Yeah.
So that would be sixteen thousand.
So I guess my question would be...
Yeah, that's, that's the way I'm reading it, I just want to know if it's correct.
I guess the question would be if you were to get these officers, what would it do to the overtime? Because there's got to be an offset, I would think, right? That would cut overtime somewhat, so there'd be...
You could cut it somewhat, it's hard, it's hard to determine.
I mean, I know with storms and whatnot, but I would think it would help.
I, I could probably work out a number if I knew.
I mean, I know it won't be...
I could work out some type of a number if I knew how many men, if the council were going to give you one, two or three men, that could come close to a number, a reduction on that side.
I think that would be an important thing to look at, you know, as far as the overtime.
Can you answer your question? If they took care of that situation, that would be like a hire.
Right.
They're a hire.
Right. Because that, that changes a lot of things, pension.
Of course.
So I would look at those numbers because that may make more sense.
Well, this council knows that I always came in with a tight budget. And I do obey the town manager's letter when, when it says that we want a, a zero budget. I tried to come in for the last several years and I've been doing it, as the commissioner said, with smoke and mirrors for a number of years. And, um, so I, I think we, it's, it's our time, please, you know, we, we need a little, a little break here. And, um, let us, let us start to, to be proactive with the men instead of reactive.
In terms of your capital request, eighty thousand, what would, how many cars would that give you?
Eighty thousand, we're looking for two new cars and one used vehicle. And I'll explain the used vehicle. We have, we have a SWAT van that could only be towed by one vehicle that we have right now. And that's, um, you want to pass out the, um...
Capital? Are they a mileage?
The mileage. We have a, one Durango that has a hundred forty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-seven miles on it. That Durango is also used by the detective bureau. Complete undercarriage is, is rotted out, has almost a hundred fifty thousand miles. There's fumes coming inside the car. What, and that's the only vehicle we have to keep because that's the only vehicle that could tow our SWAT van. So what I want to do is, is buy a good used vehicle, something like an Expedition and then get rid of the, get rid of the old Durango and replace it with the Expedition. And that could serve two purposes. It'll, it'll tow the SWAT van and it'll also put the detectives in a safe car. And if you look at the mileage on car two, there's a hundred twenty-four thousand. We're looking to remove that. And also, um, car eleven, which is the car that spoke about, to remove that. And if we, if we get two new cars, I would take one of the patrol vehicles, the one with the most mileage on it, and replace either fourteen or fifteen. One has a hundred twenty-seven thousand, one has a hundred and one thousand. Those, the mileage on that's going to significantly increase between now and the, and the time we purchase a car. And the reason I don't know which one is I usually go by what the mechanic says. Just because there's a twenty-seven thousand mile difference doesn't mean that's, that's the, the worst or the best. So, so that's what I'm looking to do. Because I can't justify to the town council getting a brand new vehicle to tow. I'm, I'm looking to buy a good used one, maybe off the state bid, maybe something from the state police surplus. And it'll serve, we definitely have to do something with a Durango. If I deadline the Durango and we have a SWAT call out, our Ford Explorers cannot tow it. They will not tow it. They just don't have the, the engine capacity.
Thank you.
And how is the K nine, the cars?
What?
I remember the K... I remember the K nine car.
The K nine car, although it has a lot of mileage on it, we have a new engine in it.
Right.
Under professional development, we have a line for police officer training at fifteen thousand. And that's a tremendous increase from what was on last year's budget.
Three nineteen.
Yeah, three nineteen. Can you just explain why, why that number increased so much?
During our process, commissioners noticed that a lot of the training hasn't been implemented, and that the time, the guys don't have the time to take off, they're short men. So we figured if we had the extra manpower, we'd get them all certified, training, IA training, FBI, DEA, any training that we can get them in, to bring them up to modern times.
Okay, so this, this number in three nineteen?
Yep.
Again relates to prospective new hires.
Plus, we also gotta replace possibly two people, one definite and one possible. So there's gonna be a lot of new training, and a lot of officer training we're gonna need. Internal and the men that are here now, like, we're bringing them up to modern times.
But it's for, it's for the perspect, okay, I understand, okay.
Chief, I just wanted to say something, I saw the Durango you were speaking about yesterday, it's a mess.
It is a mess.
Just wanted everybody to know that.
It is a mess.
I wouldn't drive it.
No.
Yeah, but you drive a Lincoln.
It's a Ford, that's why.
Yeah, that's a Durango, that's two thousand and nine.
Any other questions?
Um, under technical supplies, two oh two, you have two laptops for cruisers? Is that for the two new cruisers? Or is that replacement, or?
No, that's a replacement. Before, they weren't replacing all the equipment, when they bought new vehicles, they were just swapping it over. And now those computers are so old, they become incompatible with their software products. So it's just to bring up the speed.
If you look at the overall budget, the biggest hit is social security. And, you know, the, the possible increase of pay on the one oh one account. There's your two chunks of change right there. Where's the council? I know you're not gonna make any decisions tonight, is really take a, a good, hard look on the paperwork that was presented to you tonight. And if anybody has any questions, you know, you can feel free to call me anytime. Everybody here should have my cell phone number, I'd be glad to answer the questions on the additional manpower.
George, on two oh one, if they get the four new hires, where it says criminal arrest cards, they might have to increase that number.
The what? I'm sorry, I don't, I can't hear you.
It was a joke.
Oh, okay.
I was saying, in two oh one, it says arrest cards, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
I certainly would encourage that.
So I said if they get four more, you know, we might have to increase that.
And then we'll, uh, we'll do prisoner watches, well, yeah.
And a few more dollars for Happy Meals.
And then, and then we'll increase the petrol for transport to wherever we're going to take them, that's fine. Thank you.
Good, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Fire, you're up.
Fire, I'm ready.
We've gotta get out of here.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking when the PD's in North, and there's a call in North Banford, we stop at the library, pick up some books, and bring them down to North Banford.
Hey, you're going by.
Right. Right.
Going to both ends of town. Yep.
It's an old, it's an old Lincoln.
It is, I agree with that.
No, it really is, yeah.
They don't make them that big anymore.
No, they don't make them that nice either.
No, you're right. They went downhill after like nineteen sixty-five.
Yeah.
Sixty-eight. With the bat wing doors, or whatever they were.
You remember that?
Yeah. I had a, I had a lawyer I built the house for, they collected them. That's the only reason I know them, you know.
Oh, I love that.
Yeah, he had a bunch of them. Yes, I can. Just, oh, they're thick.
So chief, I'm starting to think I need a rescue squad just for the Rhodes family in town. My freaking mother, I was gonna choke her.
I'm sorry.
Tell you what, if it wasn't for a lady on Harrison Road that she got by accident calling, and that woman called in, she'd have been dead. Wasn't walking out by her pond, she fell down. Instead of going to contacts in her phone, she started dialing random numbers that she thought she knew. She got a lady on Harrison Road that called the, the number one.
How did she?
And she was, she was, she'd have been dead. She was. Yeah, it was cold. That's crazy.
Yeah.
Ready, chief?
Good evening. I promised to review tonight's budget, unlike the weatherman forecast of weather today. When we look at the fire department's budget, I'd like to read a prepared opening statement, if I may, to the council. Okay. The task of leading a fire department, providing service to the community, has probably never been harder as it is today. Their current mood in many communities is volatile, and emotions can get easily in the way of facts, for reason. If I'm able to live up to the mandate of properly protecting our community, our firefighters, and our organization, then all of us are gonna have to be very specific with a set of skills and understanding that allows us to do our jobs safely. The most important point to understand is that there are many boundaries a fire chief must face. The fire department is no longer sacred in the eyes of many citizens. The public does not necessarily see the fire service any different from any other governmental service. In fact, too often taxpayers see the fire department as simply an unnecessary drain on their wallets. It is a fact that some citizens see government as all-inclusive, not separating fire department from other services as well. As North Banford's fire chief, I'm a member of the upper level of government executives who execute a vision of the community's political leaders and town-appointed Board of Fire Commissioners. In the fire service, we operate based upon the unity of command, and that is our report to one person, the chairperson of the Board of Fire Commissioners. We also operate under the span of control, and that is, the supervision span is between three and seven individuals. Hence, each of our companies are led by dedicated officers who supervise their subordinates. Put it another way, the general doesn't decide who goes to war. The general executes the mission that they are given by political leaders, or, in my case, the Board of Fire Commissioners. Of most importance, I'm not a fire chief who is self-serving, autocrat, who is interested in just building an empire. I'm a department head with a focus in mind, that is to provide the very best of life, safety, incident stabilization, property conservation, and maintain a high level of safety and well-being for our one hundred and twenty-nine members. When I think of picking my battles, no matter how well I, as fire chief, provide information to the public, some people are just not going to agree, especially if the plans that they are presented call for an increase in taxes. Some people may not be supportive of the fire department. Some people may not support the fire chief. They may have an agenda based upon code enforcement instilled upon the legal requirements of the state fire and life safety code. No matter what reason, there are just some people in the community who I will not be able to bring into my camp. However, as the leader of the North Banford Fire Department, I would like to mention our successes. Historically, this, if you've been on the council long enough, our budget presentations have been in the PowerPoint format. And in the last couple of years, we have altered that format to a discussion mode, as we are doing here tonight. Most chiefs have looked at outputs as a measure of success. For example, how many stations the department maintains or plans to open, the age of the organization's fleet, or the number of its staff. The problem is, is that none of these items individually guarantee success. Success is built upon a team, and there's no lie in team. People really wanna know what's in it for them by addressing outcomes. I am in a position to provide that information. In two thousand seventeen, we responded to one thousand eight hundred and forty alarms, fourteen thou, uh, fourteen hundred and seventy-six, through which were requests for emergency medical care. Personal property lost during this period was five hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Compare that to the report that you have in front of you that outlines the total price of property saved in this community. A fast, skilled, responsible firefighters not only saves lives, but minimizes property damage and the economic impact of fire and water damage has on our citizenry. Furthermore, in the last year, EMTs, first responders, and paramedics, combined with our tiered EMS response system, that encompasses outside EMS providers when we are busy, and members of the North Banford Police Department, have successfully resuscitated many of those in our community who were victims of opioid abuse. What does that mean in layman's terms? A person went from being clinically dead to either walking out of their home or walking out of the hospital without any deficit. Yes, emergency medical services in any community is costly. And not long ago, we made a significant impact on our EMS provisions by bringing the paramedics on board. This change has saved countless lives of our taxpayers. So I need to shed some favorable light by emphasizing that tax money will have a direct return to the citizens. I must communicate to you that tax money comes right back to the citizen's house when they are having the worst day of their life. Education traditionally takes a lion's share of tax money, but some citizens do not have children in school. Public education certainly has a direct tie to the quality of life. But the quality of life is zero if your home burns down or a family member requires advanced life support. The challenges of operating a fire department in these trying times are many. We are an organization composed of professional, volunteer, and EMS personnel that must meet state and federal mandates annually, continually train and educate ourselves to the techniques that are specific to our calling. Each member contributes hundreds, if not thousands, of hours a year into an under-budgeted department. We risk our lives every time an alarm sounds. In two thousand seventeen, a total of seven hundred and sixty-seven firefighters, both internally and externally, participated in two thousand seven hundred and seventy-five hours of training, just at our training facility. We continue to work with our local partners, as well as the US military, at our fire training facility behind Public Works. With regards to apparatus, interesting point. The average age of our Class Eight Pompers is twenty-one point two years old. Our brush trucks, the average age is thirty-nine years of age. And overall, encompassing every apparatus that we have, twenty-two point four years old. A modern-day fire chief, their staff and their membership needs to be educated, creative, and in touch with the climate in our community. I'm not a fire chief that sounds the warning bell indicative of the scared cow, for our department has long passed that status. What I'm asking for tonight is for you to deeply consider supporting the Board of Fire Commissioners' recommended budget for fire and EMS operations for fiscal year two thousand eighteen, nineteen, along with our capital incentive programs. As we sit here tonight and provide you with this information, we do so with the taxpayers' money in mind. As said by Chief Cannelli, we adhere to the recommendation of the town manager with a zero-based budget. You'll see that the increases are predicated upon either contractual obligations or requirements set forth by this town council and the Board of Fire Commissioners. As we sit here tonight, I look at two counterpart fire chiefs in North Haven who's asking for eight career, eight additional career firefighters, eight. Town of Guilford just recently received a US Department of Homeland Security FEMA SAFER Act grant to hire eight more firefighters. Their funds are guaranteed for three years, after three years, the town must absorb their costs and keep them on board. In our department, one hundred and twenty-nine members provide this service to this community with nominal cost. With that said, we will address any issues that you may have. I provided you with a, an overview packet that, again, relates back to the requirements and mandates for the fire department. And I may be out of line, but I'm out of line, if you say so. The fire department operates based upon OSHA, ISO, and NFPA standards. We have a requirement for response to fires on how many people we have to have on site in order to perform tactical operations. Law enforcement does not have such standards. I wholly support, I wholly support the Board of Police Commissioners endeavor to hire more police officers. Why? Because the fire department directly interacts with the North Banford Police Department on a daily basis, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. And as? And as stated by Commissioner Pecatano, we have recently been at the scenes with North Bramford Patrol Officers when they call for help, providing them with the necessary physical assistance to control the scene. And our personnel will do that every single time they're called upon. They need help. And I say that from the bottom of my heart. I just, uh, in your handout, you have some activity information from the Board of Fire, uh, from the Fire Marshal's office. I just had to remind you that the Fire Marshal's office is staffed by two part-time individuals. They operate under Connecticut General Statute, Section 541. They are unfortunately only doing 40% of the required inspections in town. So if you're a business owner and you don't get inspected, maybe that's a good thing. From a fire safety standpoint, that's not a good thing. So, uh, again, the highlights of what the Fire Marshal's office does, or did in 2017 is highlighted there for you. And again, we, the Fire Marshal's staff works very aggressively with the building official, town planner, town engineer, as well as other department heads on a regular basis. So when we get into the budget, specifically, as I stated before, our budget increase is about 6.15%. And, um, that really has a lot to do with putting some almost realistic numbers in place. So, uh, I provided some budget summary details for you, which list a variety of accounts and where those increases come from. So, the increase that shows in Account 120, under pension and social security, the increase is a result of the 55-cent multiplier that is part of the merit system that is agreed upon by the town and the Board of Fire Commissioners. Uh, Account 202, technical supplies, again, represents some realistic costs. And technical supplies, from my perspective, um, those are basically disposable items. So the life expectancy is one year or less. In Accounts 208 and 209, the increases in heating oil, fuel, and lubricants is based upon the, uh, capital region bid that the town uses for the purchasing of those products. Accounts 301 and 302, telephone utilities represents the increase in utility rates. Account 310, equipment maintenance, uh, it may look significant to you, but again, it goes back to realistic costs based upon repairs to apparatus and vehicles. So it kind of goes back to what I said before, the age of the apparatus. As, as you all know, and you received a copy of my grant application to FEMA to replace the aerial tower, um, where we're asking for a million-dollar grant, that we won't know really anything for the way the process goes for quite some time. What I will know, keep my fingers crossed, by the end of April, is whether or not we made it through the electronic scoring. And that's key. To get to the point where they actually read what is written as to why we need to replace that truck only occurs after the electronic scoring passes. So, one of the points in the grant application is the fact that over the last four and a half years, repairs to that aerial tower have exceeded $66,000 on one truck. We have a truck that's gonna need some work right now. A priming motor for the pump is not working, and to replace that is just a little over a thousand dollars. So when you look at that small repair at a thousand dollars in reference to the total amount that, you know, historically we budgeted in that line item, the increase here kind of shows a more realistic approach than what we showed in the past. Under Account 311, uh, there is a, uh, a decrease, and Account 311 is what we put in there when we built the fire training facility. We, we had, since we built it, $2,500 for annual maintenance. We dropped it down to 2,000. I can tell you this, the training facility has performed us exceptionally well. The personnel that manage the training program do a great job, and we upkeep the facility to make sure that, uh, we have no, um, how should I say? Unexpected costs, and I say that because I'll use Wallingford as an example. Wallingford, Wallingford Fire Department built a very, very similar training facility behind their firehouse because their former one basically was condemned. It's a little bit bigger than ours, a little bit more money, but they were burning a lot, and, uh, Al, goes to you, um, that when they laid the concrete, I can't tell you that it was probably as good as the concrete that our contractor laid, um, because it spalled and exploded. And I can't tell you the thousands of dollars of, of damage that took place that they haven't repaired yet. And you're familiar with the Avon, uh, project and the damage that they had and what it cost to repair. But I can tell you this, we're doing, our staff is doing a great job maintaining the facility and making sure that we, we don't exceed the, uh, the building requirements set forth by the manufacturer for time and temperature use. So it's working out tremendously for us.
Chief, with regard to, uh, 311.
Yep.
Is there any revenue to, uh, from that?
Uh, to date, we have not charged, and at the Board of Fire Commissioners, there's been no discussion of levying a charge. So the, the primary users, I can tell you this, are North Haven, Bramford, East Haven, Madison, North Madison, ourselves, Durham, and United States Military.
Well, I bring it up because that was, uh, discussed when, when we were going to build it.
It was, it was, as a potential revenue source.
So I'd be irresponsible to not ask.
Sure.
I mean, we just felt that, you know, towns that we do mutual aid with, they come in to help us, and we go to help, we, we felt it was irrelevant.
I'm not arguing that.
No, no, I mean, I just wanted to explain. I'm just asking because that was...
You know what, I think it's a wise kind of move too, especially with what's happened with other facilities when you have, you know, you would need someone from your staff there, I would think.
And, and, you know, your, your point is really valid, coming from where I, I, I manage the New Haven Regional Fire Training Academy, um, and did a, a very large rehab to it before I retired, that took place after I retired. But the state, right now, of the, the seven regional fire training academies, the governor zero, zero budgeted their funding. So they're in, they're in a big jam, because that simply increases the cost of anybody using those facilities for any reason.
Oh, I'm familiar with that at state facilities, believe me.
Yeah.
Um, I do have another question that, uh, I'm asking because it pertains to some other discussions we're having on, on other things. But under, uh, 302, uh, on your utilities.
Yep.
Uh, you paid for a significant upgrade to the lighting fixtures at Company 2? Was, was that correct?
Yeah, that wasn't in the budget, that was out of the budget.
That was like last year?
I want to say probably two years ago.
Two years, two.
Two years ago. And I'm just wondering if, if, if this reflects any savings? It doesn't seem to, uh, because we, one of the, uh, part of the rationale for, uh, changing all the fixtures was it was going to yield some savings. And I'm asking that because we're having these discussions about almost exactly the same thing elsewhere in town, so...
That's a, that's a great question, Councillor, because we, after it was all done, uh, we recognized the same thing. So Anthony, expand on that, the payment side.
Uh, the cost, the cost actually gone up.
No, the cost of electricity went up.
Cost, and we, we had the folks from Wallingford out here, had them at every, uh, they tested every circuit breaker in the panel, tested every housing in the firehouse, because as, as you mentioned, we, that was like the trial basis to go 100% LED.
Yeah.
And the anticipation was it'd be the same thing with electric bill. And we looked at it about six months later, and the bills were actually the same or a little bit higher, didn't make sense. People that we dealt with, uh, can't you, can't be right, you got something that you're wrong. Okay, come out and prove what's wrong to us. So we had the consultant at Wallingford Electric view, then the folks from Wallingford Electric came out, and they went through the entire firehouse, and they are, they are stumped. They have no, no idea why the electric bills, the consumption is actually higher. They said, it doesn't make sense, if you're taking a 100-watt fixture and going to a 10-watt fixture, the math tells us it's gotta be low. Something's gotta be running in that building malfunctioning. We thought it might have been a refrigerator, you know, the unplugged refrigerator. It's no difference. It's, it's a mystery to the agent. But the central air conditioner, took that out. There's only three or four things that it could be in that building besides electric for the lights. And we isolated each one of those individually and saw no, no change in the meter.
Anthony, you're not on well over there, right?
Uh, citywide.
To that point, we want to be real careful, get up with a energy company that wants us to fix a whole bunch of stuff and pay for it.
Well, that, that was my point. That's why, that's why I asked the question.
It's a very difficult thing to measure.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I mean, to, to put a, a less-than charitable, uh, face on it, who sold to us that was gonna be a great savings to upgrade the lighting, uh, and, and it was a significant cost. So I don't see it reflected here. So I'm asking the question because, you know, if, if we're going to have these discussions about other buildings and so forth, you want to know what...
Especially when it's, uh, Wallingford Electric, too.
Yeah, we have Wallingford Electric, not UI.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Uh, we, we observe the same thing and kind of scratch our heads, so...
You get given numbers and, uh, you know, at some point, somebody's, you know, arguing that they're gonna be paying you money to, to make changes.
The, uh, the last account that reflects a change is Account 405, technical equipment. And again, it goes back to realistic costs, uh, based upon the need for purchase and/or replace supplies, uh, where their expected use is greater than seven to 10 years. So it's, it's not capital, uh, but in our eyes, it is capital, capital type of firefighting equipment.
What, I'm sorry, what, what is it?
Uh, it's equipment that has, uh, it's non-disposable equipment, if you want to look at it from a very layman's term, but it's equipment that's used in firefighting techniques that is, that's expensive, uh, and it lasts for, you know, seven years or less.
So have you accounted for, um, fire hose?
We have...
As I remember the discussions...
As you all know, uh, we have purchased, uh, the five-inch hose this year, and I'm scrapping together some funds right now that I've already ordered two and a half-inch hose, and you'll find in a few minutes, uh, capital requests for additional funds. Keep in mind that we, that this hose, the whole topic of hoses and purchasing, uh, we have regularly asked for capital for increasing funds in, uh, 13, 14, 15, and 17. And in 13, 14, 15, and 17, there were, uh, purchasing freezes put on every year. So we will not be able to, we will not be able to, to buy those. So, so again, when, I have a graph paper for you there, so it shows under Account 420 that capital outweigh contractual services, materials supplied, personnel costs for a five-year span, where there's not that much significance, and the significance this year is we're tending to be more realistic than, um, smoke and mirrors, as my last comment said.
So, so some hoses considered capital and some isn't because you have hose under?
Part of it.
Hose?
Yeah.
Some is considered capital and some is not? Do you have it listed under tech?
Well, I, I have it listed as a capital to buy a bulk amount as opposed to smaller amounts that could be purchased under 405.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah. 405 would also indicate where, uh, funds could be drawn from for personal protective equipment.
Chief, could you talk a little bit about, I know you talked at this commissioners meeting, about the ambulance service and the income, the ambulance service, the problems that you're having?
Sure, so...
I mentioned it to these guys once before.
So, um, this town is different than most, and that is, it has the EMS as a separate budget, and it's set up as an enterprise account, where it takes in the funds and the funds offsets the total cost, and the town subsidy this year is 175 requesting. So, um, I was asked by, uh, I was asked by the town manager, um, what if we contracted out for the service? So, uh, there's two towns around us that contract out for a paramedic service. Now, you gotta understand this. The two towns are Woodbridge and Orange, but what they contract out for is a paramedic intercept vehicle, and that is 24/7/365. They have a paramedic in a four-by-four stationed in a building in their community that the community pays for. And they respond along with the police department, because in those towns, the fire department does absolutely zero EMS. So they respond, and then an ambulance has to go with them from AMR out of wherever that ambulance may be dispatched from, uh, whether it's from a staging point someplace in another community or out of Middleton Avenue. So the ambulance has to go there, and then the paramedic would respond with the police officers, who are the first responders, do their task, and then leave the, either leave the vehicle there, or the EMT would get out of the ambulance, drive the, the intercept vehicle to the hospital that is now transporting the, the patient. So they don't have an ambulance in Woodbridge and Orange, they have a paramedic and a truck. So, um, keep your socks on. So, uh, last fiscal year in Orange, the paramedic intercept vehicle, which is dispatched by the Orange Police Department, cost that town 248,417 dollars a year, a paramedic and an intercept car. In Woodbridge, same thing, dispatched by the PD, kept in the town building, they have sleeping quarters in both of those communities. 282,142 dollars. Just for a paramedic and an intercept vehicle. A little bit different on how we operate. So when you look at the, the Account 4225, the ambulance budget, and you look at what we requested from the town council to transfer from the general fund to subsidize the EMS operation, North Bramford citizens are receiving EMS, 24/7/365, with a tiered response system composed of North Bramford PD, North Bramford Fire First Responders and EMTs, and a paramedic ambulance for 175,000 dollars. That's a real bargain. So in those two communities, they're getting a paramedic and a truck that goes to a call and waiting for an ambulance.
So Anthony, what's the negative balance in the ambulance? Because we've never funded it correctly, that we've been in the positive?
Actually, uh, the end of 17, it was in the positive.
Oh, so we started the year off?
The, uh, she's probably, uh, I think it's rebooting. Uh, but if you look at the end of 17, it was slightly, slightly in the black. It was higher flex, it was double budget, and a little lower in some expenses. Partly offsetting the expenses is, uh, there's been tremendous surge in the amount of volunteers that are pulling the, the way the end shift is, is a paramedic and an EMT. And the paramedic is contracted 24/7 through the contracting company that they're currently using. The EMT, the way it works is the volunteers have first crack at those shifts, if they're not filled by the volunteers, then we contract the people to fill those shifts. In the last probably year or so, the percentage of those shifts that were... In the last probably year or so, the percentage of those shifts that we're using the outside company to fill is significantly less, probably on the single digit. The budget initially, I think it was like forty percent and then it was twenty percent, it's actually, um, in reality, it's probably up to ten percent, if less, some ones it's zero. So that's saving us some money on the contract of paying the Vintec. Now, those folks are getting paid on a paper call basis, but it still boosts us to not have to hire the contractor and have our own folks doing this, it saves us.
So they're getting paid out of the ambulance account?
Uh, that's, as the fund, as Chief mentioned, it's a separate fund.
Right.
That's self-sustaining, it's short now, since you went to the paramedics, uh, two to one hundred, twenty-five, one hundred and seventy-five a year per year. But aside from that, that's the only contribution the town is really making is the one seventy-five for the other towns. You mentioned there are two hundred thousand dollars left, all getting as a, a live car basis.
So, our staff that is taking these shifts.
Yes.
Do they also get credit in the, on their pension for the fire department for those shifts?
Yeah.
Right, okay. So they're getting paid through the ambulance fund, and then they get credit in, so there, there's, at some point in time, there's some cost that's coming out of the fire department budget, because they're getting credit for their pension?
Pension, correct, pension is not, not correlated to the ambulance, you are correct.
Correct, okay.
You are correct.
And the cost of the ambulance too, right?
Cost of buying the cars? Cost of buying the cars, we have a capital reserve account, but, but honestly, it, the, there's no amount of surplus money to transfer from the ambulance operation over to that. So, in theory, in, in theory, the general fund defines the cars, but honestly, it's, unfortunately, it, it's a cost of doing business.
Right.
So if, if you look at another, there's a graph in your handout that shows the, uh, five-year transport revenue, and if you look at that bar graph, it's going up every single year.
I was just gonna say, so nine eighty-seven, all of two thousand.
So, so going along with that, and I, I know there's some new members on the council, so just a brief explanation, and that is, uh, when we transport individuals to the hospital, you need to recognize what classification that taxpayer, uh, or patient falls into. And that is, are they on Medicaid, are they on Medicare, do they have other insurance, or are they self-pay? And that all reflects on ultimately how much we collect, the bottom line. So for example, uh, it's remained static over the last couple of years, so this is our payer mix. Fifty-six percent of our transporters are Medicare, eleven percent are Medicaid, ten percent have Blue Cross, Blue Shield, nine percent have other forms of insurance, and fourteen percent are self-pay. And the reason I bring that up is if you look at our rates, so, first of all, a brief explanation of how the rates are determined. They're determined by the State Department of Health, Office of Emergency Medical Services, every single year. Kind of a, a, a new bit of information I just received from our ambulance billing, uh, service, is that by twenty twenty, many of these things will change. So presently, the rate schedule, if you're transported to the hospital and you only require BLS or basic life support, you would get, if you are a self-paying client, you would get a bill for seven hundred and twenty-six dollars. If you happen to get intervention by the paramedic, it's one thousand, one hundred and forty-nine. If it happens to be a cardiac arrest or another call in which medications are required, one thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven. So, um, there's other, uh, very marginal costs, such as miles that are, that are built in. But, here's the big bug. Uh, the Medicaid, Medicare charge, so if you take at that base rate of seven twenty-six, Medicaid, Medicare, they pay three ninety-two. For the paramedic call, they pay four sixty-six as opposed to eleven forty-nine, and six seventy-four as opposed to eleven eighty-seven. So again, it reflects, and this is, uh, ambulance transport business statewide, it all reflects back to your, your payer mix. So when you hear that Guilford and Bramford are making millions, their payer mix is much different than ours. Wallingford, however, is very close to what our payer mix is. Uh, so our, our clientele is very similar. Uh, and I wouldn't begin to compare it to any urban city, uh, because transporting in an urban environment is, kinda tells you what their payer mix is, it's not a money making.
So on the Medicare, Medicaid rides, do we send a bill to the people for the balance?
We generally do not.
We don't? What if we sent it to them like optional? Seriously, I mean, some of them sure could pay.
Yeah, I know.
And would want to. But, okay.
Chief, what was the nine percent?
I'm sorry? Uh, the nine percent, nine percent is other forms of insurance. Could be, uh, railroad retirement, Husky type of stuff like that.
Chief, are you tracking the bad debt as well?
Uh, I don't have bad debt information, uh, we typically haven't tracked that. Um, I can tell you that we write off a significant amount.
Right.
Um, especially to taxpayers. So the process is when the bill is sent out by contract, a, a, a client gets up to three bills. If there's no response, the report comes back, uh, I have the option of writing it off. I have the option of sending them to a collection agency, sending a collection notice, um, or moving in other directions. So, with this master list, you get the information of where the patient was picked up or resides. And there's unfortunately sometimes where there's no forwarding address, patient's deceased, there's no family, they live in the Bronx, New York, uh, they live in some housing complex in Hartford or New Haven. You know, you, you're gonna spend more on mail and chasing them down than you will in the collection side, especially if they, they ask for hardship requests, which we honor from time to time, where a person may send you a ten dollar check, uh, every few months. But that's EMS nationwide.
So do you have a, are you contracted with a service that does your billing and collections and everything, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, out of, I, I, I don't know, so do you have the number, a dollar amount of what we bill annually for the ambulance? I mean, I, I see it on your chart, it's what we, is that, that's what we receive?
That's what we receive, correct.
So, do you have a number of what we bill annually? Because we're at two-thirds is Medicare and Medicaid.
Correct.
So, I mean, just if you had, you know, a million dollars, two-thirds of that, you can tell you, you're gonna get substantially less, because we're not billing for the additional amount, and we're accepting that as payment, which is, uh, you know, it's a big thing. Like you said, the makeup, our makeup is much different.
I, I can't say that we, we don't receive, uh, payments from individuals that make up the difference. Uh, we do, uh, it's always been, you know, dating probably before my time, that we don't chase people down, uh, for differences, especially, uh, taxpayers.
Uh, Chief, roughly, what's the number for volunteers?
One, uh, I, I use the number of one twenty-nine. One twenty-nine, so, and this is something that this town council al- also kinda really may not recognize. So by the bylaws, so the department has a set of rules and regulations, right? And then each company has their own set of bylaws. So, the bylaws, um, dictate how many members per company they can have. And the bylaws for each of the fire companies, Company One, Two, and Three, state that they can have up to fifty members. So that would be really difficult for me to manage, and this budget to equip and maintain annually with.
Does that include the juniors?
So the companies do set a max number. Have I shut down applications? Without doubt, absolutely. I have on a number of occasions. We are probably one of the, the, we're, we're small minority in this state that really doesn't have a big issue of getting members to join. You may ask why? First of all, we provide a great service. We have a great leadership of company officers that do a great job. We provide them with the best training. We have a training facility in town where they can train on a regular, more so a weekly basis. We provide them with good equipment. We provide them with educational opportunities. They have a annual stipend if they meet the requirements. And under the merit system, there's pension that can be earned, uh, and later on collected for. Which, uh, a lot of volunteer departments do in the state, however, uh, ours is, is pretty good.
Chief, does that include the junior?
The what?
The junior.
Uh, does not include juniors, no, absolutely not. That juniors are, is, and what Consular Ken Delore's talking about is that, um, we have a separate entity within the fire department, uh, that's operated under the auspices of the United, of the Boy Scouts of America Learning for Life Program. We have an explorer program, and it's a way to get kids that are fourteen through seventeen and a half interested in the fire service, kind of a, more so of a, as a career path, um, that they meet once a week, and they just, uh, change their method of operation around, instead of meeting at Company One, they now meet at the different companies. Great set of leaders, uh, that meet very stringent requirements, and they're equipped with older gear that we have, and they're allowed to, uh, assist on calls, and they have non-structural firefighting gear. So they can't perform any firefighting type of task at a scene. And some people have led others to believe that, yeah, that they, they do that, uh, they absolutely can't. Uh, it's prohibited under Connecticut Labor laws and OSHA, more importantly. But they get a lot of training, and they interact with the regular membership on a weekly basis, and allows them to, you know, go through that program, and when they turn eighteen, join the regular membership of the department. And it, it's a great program, and many of our members and company officers and chief officers, in fact, went through that process in our, in positions where they are today because of that program. So, no, does not include that number.
Thank you, Chief.
That's, that's a, that's a good-sized department.
Yeah.
And, uh, for you to get people to volunteer for that, gotta be doing something right, cause a lot of towns don't have that.
You, you know what, I, I, and I, I said this before, I said this before, listen, two departments that surround us are asking for eight additional people. Can you imagine what that cost increase is gonna be in their municipal budgets? And they still gotta have a volume of volunteers. It does not eliminate volunteers.
Wanna go over your capital improvement?
Sure. So in capital improvement, um, one project is fire hose replacement, and the request is, um, four fifteen, one five, fifteen thousand dollars. The next project is the replacement of, uh, AEDs, the Automatic External Defibrillators on our trucks. Um, I, I know the North Bramford PD, a couple of years ago, had tried to replace theirs, um, without success. We're kind of in the same era of manufacturer as they are, and, uh, it, it, we really gotta look at replacing, replacing.
What's their lifespan supposed to be?
It's, it's hard to say that, Marie, but it's a good question, because the lifespan, it's not necessarily the equipment, it's, it's the, the programming ability of the device to meet the standards that are set up by the American Heart Association for CPR and defibrillation. So, right now, um, they're, they're workable, however, uh, they're, they're at their, their end of the life expectancy, and you know the dates? Yeah, I was gonna say, they're, they're at least seven years old. Uh, and again, battery replacements, uh, occur routinely. And, you know, one thing that we don't have, unlike the police department, where they have them in every car, we don't. We don't have them on every truck. And there's some of our trucks go to medical calls, and we don't have an AED. So besides the replacement, we're also looking to make sure that our apparatus have them. All new fire trucks must have them.
How many sets you looking for? Didn't say there.
Uh, yeah, right, it doesn't, yeah, what was that?
Twenty, twenty.
Two, zero.
Twenty additional or some of that?
Twenty total.
Pardon?
Twenty total.
Uh, no, it's, uh.
That would, uh, include replacing what we have and bringing us up to having the, them on each of the other trucks.
And your equipment reserves?
In the equipment reserve for the fire department?
Let me see, appropriations was four hundred and twenty-five, which was replacement of Tower One, three hundred thousand, but we don't know if we're gonna get a grant for that, or we're not gonna get a grant for that. Uh, replaced an emergency one with a lease purchase for twenty-three thousand. And rescue twenty-two replacement for, for payments at a hundred thousand dollars. That was for nineteen, eighteen, nineteen.
Correct.
The next one was, uh, same thing, four hundred and seventy-five, Tower, the lease payments for the three vehicles. And, what else, where we are, we, place engine three was in two thousand and twenty.
Yeah, we don't, we only got eighteen, nineteen, Joe, so.
Yeah, but this is, you know, this is our wish list to see what we can do so you know where we're going. That's exactly what it is, so.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Again, um, everybody should have my cell phone number, my cell number is, uh, my cellphone is on twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, and, uh, can't tell you what times it goes off, it doesn't matter where I am in the world, as long as I have cell service, you've got, you got an answer.
Yeah, you can go to the library, there's a fifteen thousand dollar replacement in there for, um, the lift.
Is there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Capital?
We'll take a look at it.
I saw it before, but I, I don't know where she was, forty-one.
Yeah, those lifts aren't that expensive, but there's nothing wrong with the lift, it's the latch on the door, it's the way she explained it. Was that lift there before we redid it?
No, no.
That came in when we redid it. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And the building inspector approved it.
I can't, I'm, I kid you not, I asked the state, I had Jack that does the elevator, had him ask the state if I could put one of those limited use in the livery?
Right, cause we did, because we did.
So what the hell, how come the library got it?
The basement incident or where the children's library is in Attwater.